All right. Welcome, everyone. It's seven o'clock. We're convening at a closed session. We've been in closed session since 5:50 PM and there are no items to report. My name is Donna Candell and I'm presiding over this meeting in President Martin's ab. Please note, any member of the public may comment on agenda items as each item is presented. If you wish to address the board, please complete a speaker card located at the entrance to the meeting room and provide it to the recording secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Or prior to the start of the item. For for non-agenda items, there's a separate opportunity for comment during regular meetings. Speakers are normally limited to three minutes or less. And the board president may limit the amount of discussion time for any one agenda item. And there are, there's a guideline for decorum outlined in the back of the agenda for this meeting. Translation services are available. And I would ask everyone to stand and join me in salute to the flag. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, items of interest from the board. Anybody?
There were seven graduations, attended seven graduations. They were wonderful, all of them. One of my former students' youngest daughters graduated. One of my students from Grover Heights from years ago got her high school diploma, which was exciting. Other than that, I didn't see any former students, which was kind of sad. But it was wonderful. I love graduation.
I too went to the graduations, all seven of them. And I just want to kind of add to that, that this really gave us an opportunity to see what our kids have gone through, not realizing that like the kids from New Tech, they had to do school at home because that was during the COVID season. So it was nice. They were so excited about everything that happened and they told us their stories. Of course, like Lopez, there's always two stories that hit you in the heart a lot. Parents were there, some with their children and so forth. Great opportunities and you get to go around to the schools, the different schools, and see what we have produced from all the new facilities and the being able to give them everything new that they didn't have before. It was, it was just amazing and it's, it's a good chance for parents to see exactly what's been done at their schools, which normally they wouldn't go to. I just want to say thank you to all staff in our district for everything with you and thank you for attending.
I just want to add, facilities, every single site for graduation looked phenomenal. And that was to our facilities and they did a phenomenal job. It was excellent. I also attended all the graduations and it's, it's really wonderful to see how each unique to their particular community. And as Dee mentioned, all these kids were kids whose, whose high school years were really impacted by the COVID pandemic. So it was wonderful to see them come together. All right, it's time for superintendent's report. Dr. Fawcett?
Thank you, Trustee Candell. I appreciate the time. I just want to start out by thanking the board for all the time that they put into the last week of school and attending all the graduation ceremonies. I thought we had an outstanding representation there. And then a quick shout out to our staff, all the way from our custodians and bus drivers to our administrators and our district office team. We had it strong and it was phenomenal seeing all the end of year celebrations at the elementary, middle and high schools. I mean, even in alternative education programs. It was just a great end of the year and I can't sing enough praise to, to the team. So that's it for me. Thank you so much.
Great. All right, on to the consent calendar. Would any member of the board wish to pull any item or items from the consent calendar for further discussion? Nope. Okay, any comments from the public? Comments from the board? Okay, seeing none, I'll take, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar items number one through seventeen.
With that, I'll make a motion that we accept the consent calendar from items one through seventeen.
A second? Roll call vote, please.
Onto us? Yes.
Palm?
Yes.
Yes.
Candell?
Yes. Great, motion passes. Onto reports and presentations, item number eighteen. Approval, School Plan for Student Achievement, SPSA, for Judkins Middle School, Mesa Middle School, Dorothea Lang Elementary, Grover Heights Elementary, Harlow Elementary, Napomo Elementary, Oceano Elementary and Ocean View Elementary. Ms. Dixon?
Thank you, Ms. Candell. It is my pleasure this evening, on behalf of the hard work of our principals, many of whom are in the audience today, yay, it's so great to see them, to share with you this next set of school plans for student achievement, or SIPSES. As you know, these are required for federal funding and categorical funding. And our principals do a really wonderful job working with their school teams to create plans for the next year and sharing them with their school psych councils and bringing them to you for approval. On behalf of the team this evening, Mr. David from Ocean View Elementary is the lucky principal that was selected to present some thoughts on his SIPSA for you this evening. So I'll hand it over to him.
All right, thank you. So the timing of this is pretty, pretty interesting, kind of ironic. Like most people, when you present, you look back and see what you've done in the past, right? Because you want to start somewhere. So I searched the old Google Drive for SIPSA presentation and up came the Ocean View and Branch SIPSA presentation from, I think, 2018 or 2019. I was at Branch, Mr. Gremble was at Ocean View, so I thought it was pretty ironic that now here I am presenting for Ocean View. So I got to review Ocean View's SIPSA from five years ago, which was kind of cool because I think we've kind of kept a lot of the strengths going and kind of built upon them this year. So I'm going to just touch on a little bit from each of the three goals, three district goals that we're kind of focusing on at Ocean View and kind of sticking with that theme of kind of memorializing what's been done at Ocean View, but also trying to continuously improve. We, we developed a new mission statement this year, kind of empower. It used to always be, I think, when Mrs. Butler was at Ocean View, she brought in the empower kind of motto and mission statement. So we've, we kind of reconstructed that, kind of actually thinking about our kids first, something simple, something that's memorable. We spent the fall kind of reorganizing and thinking about our mission statement. So this is our sixth grade mural that depicts that for the year. That's a sixth grade tradition each year to, to put a mural together. And there's our new mission statement, empowering every student every day. Looking at student achievement, this is where we were last year. Of course, the dashboard results haven't been released yet, but we were kind of expecting to be in the same area based on the results that we've seen so far. And so doing, doing a nice job in English Language Arts, according to CASP, and then mathematics is a relative weakness for us. Our students performed well, but it's kind of an area of growth for us. And so that's kind of been the trend over the past couple of years. And that's going to be our focus for next. So thinking about student achievement, we're really focusing on grade level teams and collaboration. All going through the PLC process, learning about it as a district. And so we're, we're really focusing on that at Ocean View. And so common assessments are a big thing for us next year, primarily in math. And so we've got our grade levels pretty, pretty well dialed in in terms of the frequency when everybody is collaborating. And so the next step for us is what are we collaborating about and what are we spending our time on? And so really trying to focus our energy on not housekeeping and not, you know, which field trips are coming up, but really looking at student achievement and student data to identify next steps, to make sure our students are receiving the best possible education. So next year, our common agreements, is that common math assessment will be given once per trimester. And the timing of that's really important because we have some collaboration days and some minimum days identified for our teachers to be able to work together collaboratively to identify successes and next steps from those assessments. So those, what those assessments look like, the teams get to decide. We're going to focus on the timeline and making sure that everyone's administering those assessments and looking at them. Math night is something new for Ocean View next year. So we're going to have a math night at the end of September where we bring our family and our community to kind of experience some of the new math, some of the math games and some of the things that we're excited about with math. I know we're adopting the iReady curriculum and our teachers are pretty, pretty excited about that. We had three teachers on the, that and they like brought their teams into that. So we probably had half of our staff jumping into iReady stuff this past year, just hoping that it would be adopted. And luckily it was, so we're, we're going to hit the ground running with that. Organizational excellence and student achievement, I think there's a lot of crossover with those two a lot of times. And so one of the things that we're focusing on, again, trying to make sure that we're dedicating that collaboration time to student achievement. We were having two minimum days dedicated to vertical articulation among grade level teams. Our grade levels have done a really good job collaborating over the years, but not necessarily across grade band. And so when there's something really cool happening in sixth grade, we need for the fourth grade team to know about it. When something exciting is happening in fifth grade, we want the third grade team to know about it. And so we're dedicating some time for those teams to have to collaborate together. So identifying what's working structurally within your, structurally and culturally within your team, ideas that just naturally have kind of come out of that or walk to learn. There's been, our third grade team has really been jumping into walk to learn this past year. And so sharing that with other grade levels, they're now deciding, okay, maybe we need to jump on the bandwagon and explore walk to learn next year. Illuminate assessments, that's, that's kind of started with our fifth grade team and that's trickled down to our, our fourth grade team and our third grade team. And so by creating those opportunities for teams to work together, it's kind of creating this, some like organic change where I don't have to stand there and say, let's do this. Our grade levels are identifying that without me necessarily pushing for it. To increase collaboration and also hold one another accountable, we have a website essentially for Ocean View where each grade level shares their slides. So as they're, they're having their weekly meetings, they're also updating their slides to where if the fifth grade team wants to look to see what kindergarten team did this past week, they can, they can look in those slides and they can see what their agenda, they can see what they were, they were spending their time on. Organizational excellence, keeping with that, we have monthly care team meetings. So this is a group that consists of the resource teachers, speech teacher, psychologist, counselor, nurse, principal, intervention teacher, and this is kind of where our tier two and tier three starts. So again, going back to when our team levels meet, if they have concerns about a student, they don't need to spend the first 10 or 15 minutes trying to figure out what's, what's going on with this particular student. They can refer that student to our care team and we take it from there. So that way the, the team can stay focused on, on the more important things, which is, you know, going through those, those PLC cycles. So we take a look at academics, behavior, social emotional concerns, the whole child, right? Whatever, whatever they need. We've got a team of experts in the room to do that. And so typical outcomes for that might be check in, check out, might be referral to intervention, to work with our intervention teacher, might be counseling, might be a next step of SSTs, your mentors or something, we're going to start next year to focus on students that struggle with attendance. So we're excited about that as well. And then just coming out this year with our weekly newsletter called The Cougar Den. It's an opportunity for us to connect with our community. We send it out weekly through Parent Square. We sent out 38 of them this year. And this is also a collaborative effort. This isn't sitting there sending it. It's fixed between our secretaries or PTO and everybody putting it together and that goes out once a week. Keep our community engaged. So health and wellbeing and also again, all that overlap also with organizational excellence. We really want students to know what they enjoy. When they leave Ocean View, we want them going into middle school knowing what their interests are, what their strengths are, maybe what their next steps are. And so we want to expose them to as many, as many things as possible. And so we also have developed a culture and climate committee. Members include a member of, from each grade level. This is where we start, we talk about a lot of our PBIS initiatives, assemblies, field trips, school traditions. And again, this going back to our weekly grade level meetings, this eliminates the need for our second grade team and our third grade team to spend half of the time talking about their upcoming field trips because that's this team's job. The career fair was pretty unique this year. Our counselor, Melissa Chitwood, has done a great job the past couple of years, putting together a really, really comprehensive career fair. You would think that you were at a high school career fair. So that was available to our students in third through sixth grade. And we also invited sixth grade classes from all of the five city schools that joined us by bus. And I think Harlow even walked, I think. It was just cool. So that was fun and we're going to keep that going. And then something new this year is our intramural sports tournaments and game club. So we organize five sports tournaments at lunch. This is available to students in first through sixth grade. This is also a learning opportunity and a teaching opportunity for our kids. We have them sign a sportsmanship compact. And so yes, they're engaging in competitive sports, but they're also learning sportsmanship. We go over, there's four different rules that we kind of go over and they have to agree to, or they engage in the tournament with the idea that when the tournament's over, they remember those rules and those lessons. And then our counselor again led those game club days. So 35 game club days were offered this past year. So that's kind of the end of the presentation. I just thought I would end with this, kind of the start and the finished product. Our mission statement, vision statement are there. We're pretty excited about where Ocean View is going. That's it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any, any questions about this item from the board? Do we have any public comment? Comments from the board?
I like your mission statement. Simple, straightforward, easy to understand. I happen to live close to your school, so I see all the cars parked there all the time. Interesting that your school, as well as all the other schools, math seems to be the issue. That seems to be the issue at all the schools. And what's the plan for next year?
Maybe I could take that question, Mr. David. So later in the agenda, the board will be asked to formally approve our new adoption for iReady for K5. And we have a very robust professional learning plan created that's going to be district wide for all of the teachers. Each of our elementary sites has additional individualized plans for additional targeted work, such as Mr. David explained, and you'll see in some of the other SIPSES related to common formative assessments, but we'll also be working on that as, as a district over the next few years. At the six through eight level and high school, we have mathematics TOSA, Katrina Bryan, who's really focused on professional learning around building thinking classrooms and diving deeply back into what does every student need to learn at each grade level? How will we know that we've learned it? What do we do if they haven't learned? And how will we extend it if they already have? So that PLC process is alive and well and will be a district focus across all of our schools next year for math.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. David. That was wonderful. I'll take a motion.
I just have one other comment to all the principals that are here. I appreciate all your conclusion statements on, on each section. It makes it very easy to look at your data and, and look at what you're evaluating. It's nice to see the growth that we see going on. It's nice to see the effort to correct behaviors with the PBIS. I don't know, they were all excellent, easy to read. In fact, I asked Dr. Fawcett, was, were this a different format than the first group that we looked at? Because it seemed easier to look at. He said it's because I was familiar. But I want to thank all of you for all your efforts. It's much appreciated, all those conclusion statements.
It's nice to see a great showing of all the principals taking time out, giving them vacation time. We really appreciate it. And as Ms., I'll call her Ms. Vicki, said, a lot of this is right in her realm of educating. And there's, we have two teachers, three with Colleen, four with Dawn. It's nice to hear their opinions and stuff. So thank you guys so much. And I love the fact that you're putting sports in there too, because it gets students to learn to get along. And it teaches them how to behave, so then we don't have to see them later. Bye. So thank you so much.
Any other comments? Thank you, thanks again for all of you for being here. And that's a lot of work doing those reports and appreciate your efforts. I'll entertain a motion for approval, this item?
I move approval, agenda item number eighteen, School Plans for Student Achievement for Judkins Middle School, Mesa Middle School, Dorothea Lang Elementary, Grover Heights Elementary, Harlow Elementary, Napomo Elementary, Oceano Elementary and Ocean View Elementary Schools.
A second? Roll call vote?
Mayor?
Mayor? Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right, item, number, oops, number nineteen. So report first reading of new courses for the 2024-2025 school year. Ms. Dixon?
Good evening. Thank you, Ms. Candell. I do not have slides for this, but I do have slides for the next item. So I thought I'd come up and speak from here because here I will stay. This evening, we have a variety of new courses here for your consideration. This is just a first reading of those new courses. You'll note that the courses that are up for consideration and will bring them back for approval fall into three buckets. One of, the majority of them truly are because of Prop 28 Visual and Performing Arts Additional Funding. We've had a wonderful year of music making and other offerings across the district. And we are expanding a few more. So you'll see concert choir at AGHS, which is exciting. Studio art being offered up at PVA Lopez and also and Napomo High School. And then some art courses in middle school, including animation. Another area is just the one course dual enrolled chemistry. This was after careful consideration at AGHS. The school is pivoting from an AP Chem offering to a dual enrollment chemistry offering. The teachers and teams are very excited about it. And then the third bucket is the new courses that are required for the alternative pathway to a diploma for our special education students who fit the criteria for that pathway. I reported on that with Director Quam a few meetings back. So these are the three buckets this year. One of the things that is always a challenge with new courses is balancing all the wonderful ideas that we have out there in the world for new things we'd like to teach our students with the requirements that we have for staffing, especially as our budget constricts and we make careful considerations. Sometimes there's just not space for everything, but we are very excited about the new courses that are being proposed for next year on this list tonight. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
All right, does the board have any questions about this item? Actually, before I go, before I start, I will say, you're to join us at 7:20.
I, I just have one quick question. Is it going to be hard to keep somebody to teach the concert choir?
We are very excited about a teacher who has been with us as part-time at AGHS and part-time in our elementary music program named Ms. Detillo. She is moving full-time to AGHS and her passion is vocal arts. And so she is very excited to, our choir's been moving along at AG this whole time, but very excited to really reinvest in it, grow the program, and she's been doing a wonderful job. So we have a teacher identified and we think it'll be a great year.
To help us with our kazoo band, right?
I mean, I think she would be great. I, I hope that early, early in the first part of next year, we'll be able to bring a report to you again on what our Prop 28 plans are and reintroduce you to our inspiring elementary music teachers. Kev McDonald, who some of you know well, is sort of taking a leadership role with that group. And if anyone can bring the kazoo band alive, it's going to be Kev. So we'll see. We're working on that, Ms. Santos.
On the new courses that we're kind of introducing, are a lot of these courses going to be, I guess, crossed over to help them in to, let's say, college, to Cuesta and all that?
For sure. Dual enrollment chemistry course is of course a very direct relationship because they'll be receiving Cuesta credit for successful completion of that course. You'll see that the other two courses proposed for high school are going to be submitted to the UCLP portal, which is the organizational tool that the state uses to approve courses that give students A through G credit. And so these courses will be submitted there and we anticipate that approval without an issue. And then the CTE exploratory introduction courses that are offered in middle school are a great way for kids to get to know what their interests are and then consider pursuing them at whatever one of our high schools they go to. So we're very excited about all of those, both the art courses. We have wonderful art courses, especially at AGHS and Napomo High School. And then the animation course we offer at all of our high schools, including New Tech, the extended courses that move on past that and digital media arts. So yes.
Any other comments from the board? Any public comment on this item?
I have one quick comment.
Yeah.
I'm just really excited to see that we keep offering middle school CTE opportunities as well. We keep pushing that down to the lower grades. So, so thank you.
All right, this is a first reading only. So we will go on to item twenty. Is report first reading fiscal year 2024-2025 Local Control Accountability Plan, the LCAP. Ms. Dixon again?
Thank you, Trustee Candell. It is my pleasure this evening to share with you the draft of our Local Control Accountability Plan for the 2425 school year. So as a reminder for the board and the audience, the LCAP or Local Control Accountability Plan describes the actions that the district takes that are principally directed towards students in the unduplicated count. And we increase and approve services to those students above what the rest of the students also receive. The, the unduplicated count, which I just say all the time because I live in this world, is low-income foster youth and English learners, although LCAP requirements also ensure that we specifically address the needs of our long-term English learners who are grouped with the ELs and also our students with disabilities, although those students are not officially included as part of the unduplicated count. So that's something that's evolved over the lifetime of the LCAP. The first thing that I'd like to share with you is our budget overview. And I put this here because this is one of three documents that you will have seen in your item. The Budget Overview for Parents describes how the LCAP funding, and we refer to LCAP funding as the piece of the pie on the right side that's cut out there, the LCFF Supplemental Concentration Grants. We usually in the district colloquially refer to that as the LCAP funding. So this shows how that much funding reflects in the rest of the district budget. You'll hear a budget presentation from Mr. Eichberger here shortly. And we'll describe all of the other things happening in the budget. And the LCAP is really articulating that one light blue piece of the pie. So that's an important thing for the public to understand, for our parents. That's what this document is called, the Budget Overview for Parents, and of course, for the board. Some basics, we had a new template this year. As Ms. Mayor pointed out, we also had a new template for the SIPSES, would they sort of relate? They look similar to each other now. So what you see before you is the year one of a new three-year plan cycle. There is a clear section for our educational partner engagements discussion. And so we talk about each required group that we consult with and what they had to say and then how that impacted the LCAP, which is just much more clear than it used to be. We have a new required goal for Lopez High School because they qualified as an equity multiplier school. Basically, the reason they qualified for that is their, I think, migratory pattern, that's birds. But anyway, they have students that move in and out of their school more routinely than other schools. And their demographics are what really hit that mark for Lopez. So with equity multiplier funding comes approximately $180,000. So throughout this year, Mr. Eichberger and I have been working closely with Ms. Bowen and Mr. Gladhill to really, and their team, to really consider what they can do with that funding. They also, as an aside, and you saw in the LCAP, qualified for continuous support and improvement funding, which is another approximately one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. It's a really game-changing opportunity for Lopez. They have some very exciting goals. You'll hear about that next week when they present on their school plan. So they'll articulate that in more depth. In any case, because we have a, uh, equity multiplier school in the district, that's a new requirement where we write a goal specifically for them. So you saw that there. We also needed to articulate required actions for all students who were in the student subgroups, who are in the red on the California school dashboard. So that's in the LCAP. And the annual update is now a separate document. So you saw that in a different place in the report that you received. Um, it still has the, uh, section that we call the EIFL, which is the Increased or Improved Services for Foster Youth, English Learners, and Low-Income Students. Uh, that's where we explain why we chose the actions that we chose that are, um, contributing towards meeting our required percentages and what we expect to happen because we are doing them. Um, this section is always the most important section for the county office to review, and it really shows how we are reaching that percentage, uh, which is called the Minimum Proportionality Percentage. That percentage is what we have to say we are reaching that is giving students above what everybody else gets. So that's what that explains. So this section is just a little screenshot of the various tables that are at the back of the LCAP. So the top one, um, is the total expenditures that you'll see there, um, describes, that's the Minimum Proportionality Percentage, approximately sixteen percent. The contributing actions are all of those actions that are helping us meet that percentage. The annual update table talks about how much we thought we'd spend in this year, this year's LCAP, and how much we are estimating we will actually spend. And as you'll see, it's really quite close. I thought that was really fine work, mostly from amazing director Rhonda Seibert. And, uh, then we explain that in more depth in the Contributing Actions Annual Update Table. So, um, those are the sections you see at the end. Um, Highlights of Our Current Plan, this year that we just are finishing. Um, we have our Super Size Intervention Program. It came back into the LCAP this year, which was really exciting. Uh, we had increased tutoring hours based on educational partner feedback. Of course, we kept our amazing counselors in place and some of the other wonderful things that we've done. Um, as we look to next school year, our intervention teachers are back out, but that doesn't mean they're gone. They're moving back, and this has been a conscious, thoughtful, multiple-year plan into one-time funding that we are spending down because we don't want to lose it. Um, additionally, you may have noticed in Action One, Action one point two five, identifies planned carryover for intervention in school year twenty-five, twenty-six. So that looks like a big bucket action, but we're estimating how much carryover we'll have. And our intention is to use that carryover to continue to pay for those intervention teachers, um, in the school year after this next one. So just highlighting that. And as I shared, we have a new Goal Three, which is unusual. We've been a two-goal LCAP for many, many years, and now we are a three-goal LCAP, um, for the Lopez Equity Multiplier Project. So where are we in the process? Um, we posted the LCAP on the website, on, on our district website, on Monday, June third. Um, after this item, we will conduct our public hearing on the LCAP. Uh, we will continue to take any feedback over the next few days before we bring it back to you, um, on June eighteenth for approval. If approved, we will be submitting it to the county office for approval. All of the county offices in the state approve LCAPs on behalf of the state. We typically receive that by the end of August. So, um, as I close up here, I want to say thank you to, uh, Mr. Gimlin, who's in the audience, uh, Ms. Spurbeck, who's one of our, um, incredible Aries team ladies who helped, uh, figure out a lot of the data and the metric points, and of course, our amazing business office team, Mr. Eichberger and Ms. Seibert. Um, this is not a one-woman project. It is a team, and I'm happy to be up here talking about it on behalf of that team. With that, um, of course, we always welcome feedback, and I'm happy to take any questions or feedback you have now.
Thank you. Um, does the board have any questions on this item? Is there any public comment? Finding none. Um, are there comments from the board?
Since this is a first reading, do we take this out of our binders and?
Um, you, you may do with it whatever you'd like. This is there. Uh, it is available on the website, and it will be in your binder for the next meeting.
Um, I will say, I was on the, the LCAP committee when it first rolled out. How many years ago was that?
This is lucky number ten.
Okay. So seems like things are rolling along smoother than in the beginning, trying to figure all this out. So I, but I know how much work this takes. So all that. All right. Um, so this is a first reading. And to move on to item number twenty-one, Public Hearing, Fiscal Year Two Thousand Twenty-four, Twenty-five, Local Control Accountability Plan. So I will open public. Good. Uh, so the public hearing opens at seven thirty-six PM. Are there any comments from the public on this item? Seeing none. The hearing closes at seven thirty-six PM. Move on.
Thank you, Trustee Candell. I have the pleasure of presenting a few items in a row this evening. Uh, the first is, we can call it a proposed draft budget or a first read of the twenty-four, twenty-five estimated budget, or I'm sorry, um, estimated actuals for twenty-three, twenty-four, and the proposed budget for twenty-four, twenty-five. I would, uh, be remiss if I didn't take a moment to give the most huge, uh, thank you to Director Seibert and the Business Department team. Um, we are so, so very fortunate to have her expertise and support in the development of the budget. And with that, I will jump right in. I'm calling this presentation tonight a tale of two years. Meaning if we go back two years, everything was great. We had this money that was flowing in, and we were able to give double-digit raises in that timeframe. And then the bottom fell out. And now we are faced with this budget difference that the state legislator, uh, legislature and the, the governor are calling, uh, a current quote-unquote problem that is approximately twenty-seven point six billion dollars in terms of the state budget. Now, I want to point out that this is a difference from the Budget Act of twenty-twenty-two to the current Budget Act that they're looking at for twenty-four, twenty-five. And I say that because there were some assumptions that were made about revenue that didn't come in, and we are still feeling that impact. Ultimately, the actual quote-unquote deficit is much larger than that twenty-seven point six billion-dollar problem, air quotes. Uh, it's actually somewhere around forty-four point nine billion dollars. However, the governor did work with some partners to have an early action plan to shave off approximately seventeen point three billion before the actual budget cycle and the negotiations for, uh, how the money will potentially be coming in. So what does that mean? And this is the foundation, right? The foundation is tightening our belt. Really, uh, there is going to be a spend-down of the reserves that were built up previous to and during, uh, the pandemic, as well as reductions to actual expenditures. There are some borrowing from one-time monies and then some delays, deferrals, fund shifts. Ultimately, there is a lot of work that we still aren't a hundred percent certain about. There, uh, one could call it foggy in terms of the outlook, meaning we don't quite know what it is. Uh, however, we have been, it has been shared that we are anticipating the one point zero seven percent COLA for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. I say that with a giant asterisk because we aren't sure, meaning until the final budget act, those things could change. Meaning they could reduce the, the COLA, they could use more revenue borrowing, they could have, uh, deeper cuts. It, it is tough to say. However, the current outlook is that education has remained mostly unscathed in the current budget proposal. But that leads to the fogginess, meaning there is some uncertainty. And there, this graph represents a really, really large estimate of where the actual state revenues will come in, meaning that gray shaded area, the state revenue could fall anywhere in that. It could be awesome and hit that two hundred and sixty, two hundred and seventy billion-dollar mark by twenty-seven, twenty-eight, or it could be dismal and be a hundred and eighty billion in twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Meaning there is pure speculation. The dark blue line represents the May revision, meaning that is what they are estimating the revenue to be for the state. Okay? Middle of the road. The challenge is the green line. That's the break-even mark. Meaning that represents the shortfall between the proposed budget and the estimated revenues. Meaning there is a structural problem with what is being built at the state level, which could unfortunately impact us as a district. So where does that bring us to in terms of our budget? Ultimately, just like the state, we have to build a set of parameters that we develop our budget within. Think about it as an algebra problem, meaning these are assumptions, and these key components are the variables that can change. So with an algebra problem, the numbers that you put in give us the outcome or the results, the answer to the problem, if you will. So the assumptions we use for our current budget is an enrollment decline of approximately a hundred and ten students. I say that because when we go back on a ten-year trend, we were trending a hundred and fifty student decline. This current year, we actually saw growth. That makes it really challenging when you're looking at a steady decline versus some uncertainty. Ultimately, this enrollment average is based on a five-year trend. With the COVID year, that one really crazy where we lost over three hundred students, that year has been an average of the other four, meaning we recognize that year was an anomaly, and we kind of removed it as an outlier. So this represents what we anticipate the potential decline for the next three years or our budget cycle will be as it relates to student enrollment. FTE, we've remained same of, uh, anticipating fifteen retirements, replacing with ten teachers, meaning using an attrition of five teachers, uh, in terms of reduction. And that's in alignment with the number of declining students or the, the declining enrollment. Our ADA this year, we did see a bump in terms of our ADA. In fact, it was ninety-four point five percent at P-two, which is fantastic. Uh, part of that is because our enrollment continued to grow after Seibert's, meaning they set the number of students, and then our attendance is based on that number. And because we continued to grow, uh, as a district, it helped our attendance average, which, uh, if we wouldn't have had that continued growth, it would have been about ninety-four percent. So the ninety-three point five is a conservative estimate based on the trends that we had been seeing of approximate point five growth before this year, uh, meaning since the pandemic. COLA, that is, uh, stolen straightly from the School Services Dartboard, and that's the number that, uh, is the industry standard. So the draft snapshot for the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, this is something that it's been a while since you've looked at in a condensed form in the presentation. This represents the major funds, and I'd like to actually start on the right and work to the left. So I know it's opposite of what we're used to. However, uh, it does show us kind of where some of our developer fees and other mitigation funds are, all the way to the general fund that I'll end with, because that's what the majority of the presentation, uh, related to the budget will focus on. So our developer fees and our mitigation fees found in Fund Twenty-five are those fees that are paid to the district when someone builds a home or a commercial property. And ultimately, those monies are meant for development or growth for the district. So you'll notice we have a nice ending fund balance of three point two million dollars. That money is tentatively set aside for the kindergarten expansion at Lang, meaning we've saved the money, it's audited in a separate fund, and we have a designated purpose that we're going to use that money for. Measure I, you might be going, wait, ending fund balance of one point seven million? This is not the full Measure I balance. This is the money for the current budget year, and it shows us expending based on those projects. And this summer, we will be fortunate to start some projects at Ocean View. Uh, hopefully, a project at Branch and a project at Paulding, meaning we are encumbering those Measure I funds. Fund fourteen is deferred maintenance. You'll notice that one zeros out, meaning the board contributes general fund money to that routine maintenance, deferred maintenance projects. This is going to be roofs, painting, and other smaller projects that, uh, have, still need to be done, that the sites themselves don't have funds for, uh, and that it is beyond what our routine restricted maintenance can. Cafeteria solely set aside for feeding kiddos. And you'll notice this is a program that is doing very well. Part of that is due to the Universal Meals Program. And the other part of it has to do with the, the growth of the number of meals that we're serving. Meaning, um, Director Poynnes has done a good job of expanding our breakfast in the classroom to include all of our elementary sites and our middle schools, and it's being used, uh, sparingly at some of our other secondary sites, and then the extension of our supper program and supporting the feeding of students in our ELOP and after-school programs, as well as some of our sports programs. So, uh, the utilization of the cafeteria, uh, and the growth of the nutrition services is based on that utilization and the reimbursement back to the district. Adult Head, another one of those funds that is, uh, set aside solely for educating adults. These are going to be our GED programs, diploma programs, ESL, and then some of those community programs that are geared towards offering educational opportunities for adults in the community, some of which are former students of the district earning their diplomas, of which we had a great opportunity to see at Lopez High School last week with the graduation. Perhaps, uh, one of the most touching graduations that I was able to attend last week. So many. And the last column is all of those general funds. So this represents both unrestricted and restrict, uh, restricted general funds. And I say that because you're going to look at that number and go, okay, forty-five million. I like that. Then when you see just unrestricted, you'll notice that number shrinks. So that projected ending fund balance goes from forty-five million down to thirty-three point five million in year twenty-four, twenty-five. Part of that is because we have people that are being paid, uh, out of our restricted general fund, other expenditures that can only be used for specific purposes, such as special education, uh, routine restricted maintenance, other things. Ultimately, uh, this unrestricted general fund is the money that we have the most control over as a district. Meaning when we talk about our present, our percent reserve, we are looking at the unrestricted general fund access revenue or the amount of money that we finish the year with. And you'll notice when looking at that net change, that there is some deficit spending. That is partially planned, meaning, uh, earlier this year, the board, uh, was able to allow Dr. Handy an opportunity to negotiate a raise based on some- was able to allow Dr. Handy an opportunity to negotiate a raise based on some previous excess reserves that had been accumulated. And ultimately, that planned spend down is tied to a number of those factors. Ultimately, the ending fund balance, when we look at the reserves is positive, meaning that number is in the black, which is good. Commitments, I do want to spend a little bit of time on this slide because Ms. Dixon did a great job talking about that planned carryover as it relates to LCAP. Ultimately, the commitments you see, the first two lines are that exact component. Meaning some of it is for that intervention teacher and spend down, some of it is just general carryover for the LCAP. Ultimately, the commitments are tied to just those programs. You'll also notice a different one for this year. Special education future contribution. And I, it's questionable is if you had a chance to all read the same school services article that I did. But it did discuss that idea of how special education costs are increasing at the, at the state level. We're feeling that as a district as well. While we have been suffering through declining enrollment over the last 10 years, the number of students with disabilities and identification has continued to increase. Meaning the costs as a percentage has gone up. Add that to the fact that we also have increasing costs for our special educators tied to raises, right? We want to give everyone that 5% raise. Those increases aren't met by additional federal dollars. Meaning special education is typically an underfunded program. There's that nasty word encroachment that used to be thrown around regularly. And ultimately, it was really, we spend more than we bring in. And this idea of commitments allows us to set aside some of that excess reserve to help offset the general fund contribution to special education in future years. And you might be thinking, almost 9.7 million dollars, that's a lot to set aside. It's really not in comparison to how much the general fund contributes to special education. And when looking at a past five year trend, it does range from 14 and a half million dollars per year of general fund contribution, all the way up to over 20 million. Meaning the, the district does make sure that those programs continue to run. And setting aside this funds for future contributions means it can sit in that separate commitment. And then the district would have the ability to use that money a few different ways. One, it could say, we had a year where students were placed at non-public schools. And it was a big hit to the budget that we had not anticipated to the tune of, you know, over a million dollars. We would have that set aside to pay that down. It could also go to the increase in the general fund contribution. Meaning if the increase is more than we had anticipated, knowing that it's more than we had contributed this year, that would be another way to, to reserve it. Or if it was a really bad budget year, we could use that whole amount to offset the general ed contribution to special educator, or I'm sorry, the general fund contribution to special ed. So there would be ways that it could sit as a reserve account for future use tied solely to special education. So this is where we get into the actual nitty gritty. And I say estimates. So that idea of it being foggy, the governor's budget versus, or the May revision versus the legislator's version. There's still some uncertainty of where the actual budget will fall. This is our estimate based on the current data or information that we've been able to enter into that algebra problem. Meaning when we look at that multi-year, remember, we budget not just for the current school year. Or in this case, when we're building the 2425 budget, not just for that year. It's always in a multi-year projection or an NYPD. And you will notice that we do have reserves beyond the 3% minimum reserve that's required by the state. This shows it a little bit more in depth with a combination of other committed funds and assigned funds, meaning the district assigns one third of potential vacation payouts. The cash stores is tied to our warehouse and we have to have a certain amount of cash backed with what's in the treasury. And ultimately, the mandated 3% reserve. So even when we take all of those other things out, you'll notice that very bottom line reserve for future economic uncertainty. This is what we have based on our estimates for the multi-year budget above the state minimum and above the other committed funds. And you will notice it does end in a very nice number that is positive. So this budget, the draft or proposed budget for the 2425 year and the two out years does qualify for a positive certification. Meaning we have the money to pay for all three years based on the current projection.
Great. So board have any questions on this item?
Ms. Van?
So when do we start accumulating more reserves? I don't like that number going down.
One.
The only, the only time would be the government or the governor's budget gets bigger or more revenue comes in and then.
There, there's two ways to increase our reserves. One, if the state budget gets better or if our attendance and enrollment get, get better, meaning more revenue comes in. The other is reductions, meaning we spend less, our expenditures goes down. So those are the two ways that we can see that revenue balance grow. One of the things that we, I've been working very closely with our administrators on is our, our staffing ratios and looking at our projected enrollment for next school year and developing the master schedule board at the secondary sites and the number of staff allotted for elementary sites. Meaning we are trying to find that balance in terms of staffing that is cautious because we don't know exactly what the, the budget will end up holding. And also that really attempts to address that, that revenue, potential revenue shortfall.
Okay, are there any public comments on this? Seeing none, any comments from the board?
I'm glad to see that we continue to have a positive certification or plan for positive certification. Cause we know there's the, the benefit of that. It'll allow us to get a really good ball under ring for measure I for each of our issuances as well. So I mean, so it's, it's, I'm glad that we're still planning that for the future. That direction.
Anything else? Okay, this is report only. Item number 23, public hearing with CMRE Unified School District fiscal year 2024, 2025, proposed budget adoption.
So this is the second part of the presentation. This is the public comment. Ultimately, the item will have the ability for the public to respond. And the actual budget will come back to the board on the 18th for formal approval. Meaning this evening, the public comment is for anyone in the audience to provide any input.
Okay, the public hearing starts at 7:59. Are there any comments from the public? Right, seeing none. Hearing closes at. Move on to item number 24. Approval Resolution A-2324-29 Designating Certain General Funds As Committed Fund Balance. Mr. Eichberger.
So this is tied to that slide where I talked about actual resolution to commit funds. And this would commit the money that was shown specific to LCAP supplemental and concentration, as well as a special education future contribution. By committing the funds this evening, it will allow our amazing Director Seibert, the ability to build that into the actual budget that will come.
Questions from the board? All right, any public comment on this item? Seeing none, are there any comments from the board?
I have a comment.
All right, I'll take a motion.
I have a comment real quick. I just like that we're, we're actually now planning for special education future contributions. We know we have them every year, right? So the fact that we're now planning for them is, I think is really smart strategically. So that's nice to see.
Any other comments? All right, I'll take a motion for approval.
Move approval, Resolution A-2324-29 Designating Certain General Funds As Committed Fund Balance.
Second.
Brokaw?
Stewart?
Aye.
Mayor?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Candell.
All right, item number 25. Public hearing. Education Protection Account EPA to receive and disperse revenues from incremental increases in taxes imposed by Article 13, Section 36F and adoption of Resolution A-2324-23. Mr. Eichberger.
Yes, every time I look at the EPA, I always think Environmental Protection Agency. This is not that federal agency. This is tied to state money. And ultimately, we are required yearly to account for this money. Ultimately, the first item is the public hearing. And then you'll notice it does show how much we bring in, meaning approximately 1.8 million dollars. And I can say that 100% of these funds goes directly to certificated teacher salaries for instructional purposes only. Meaning we fund 15 teachers with this EPA money.
Okay. Public hearing starts at 8:02. Are there any comments from the public? Seeing none. The hearing closes at 8:02. I will move on to item number 26.
Is the second item, the actual approval of the resolution that has to do with the expenditures of the EPA funds.
All right. Does the board have questions at this? Public comment? Comments from the board? We take a motion for approval.
Move approval, Education Protection Account EPA to receive and disperse revenues from incremental increases in taxes imposed by Article 13, Section 36F and adoption of Resolution A-2324-23.
Second.
Brokaw?
Stewart?
Aye.
Santos?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Candell.
Ms. Candell, your vote.
Yes, sorry.
Motion carries.
Getting ahead of myself here. Okay, item 27, discussion. First reading of initial proposal for collective bargaining from the CMRE Unified School District to the CMR Unified Teachers Association for 2024, 2025 negotiations. Dr. Hand.
Thank you, Trustee Candell. The RADA Act, which governs employer-employee relations, requires that we present our proposals to the public in a two-step process. This sunshine clause gives the public an opportunity to hear what both parties plan to negotiate. And so tonight, we bring forward the CMR's initial proposal for collective bargaining with the CMR Unified Teachers Association for 2425 negotiations. As it's the first time presenting this, I'll provide information in more detail. We're proposing Article 9, class size. The district commits to review Pacific View Academy supervising teacher caseloads as outlined in previously agreed upon language. So in our last bargaining agreement, we agreed to return to the table and to discuss the impacts of that agreement. Article 10, evaluation procedures, specifically Appendix 6, which is the evaluation tool. The district seeks to update evaluation language to align with the updated California standards for the teaching profession, which happened this year, which is fantastic. And Article 17, the term of the agreement. The district seeks to enter into a multi-year agreement commencing on July 1, 2024 with annual automatic reopeners. And of course, throughout, but especially in that term of agreement, which encapsulates the entire agreement, we are committed to attracting and retaining student-focused professionals by fostering a professional culture focused on high standards, research-based practices and response service to all educational partners. This is the first of a two-part process. So this is for the board's information only. Happy to offer any insight should you desire.
Great, thank you. Does the board have questions on this item? Any public comment? Seeing none, any comments from the board? All right, this is the first reading only. 28, approval, second reading, curriculum adoption, elementary math, grades K through 5, iReady Classroom Mathematics, 2024 Curriculum Associates.
Thank you, Trustee Candell. As we discussed earlier, this is the request for approval for our new elementary math curriculum. It has been on public display for almost a month. We haven't received many customers, but it has been available and it has also been available on our website. So people may have had the opportunity to look there should they choose to. Pending your approval this evening, I'm excited to share, I didn't share in the item before, that on Thursday, we have an optional training for any K-5 teacher who'd like to get a advanced look with iReady. And so they'll be able to get their teacher edition, so they'll have it over the summer and learn a little bit about the, about what the program's all about in a three-hour training. And then of course, there's more training to come that will be during the required workday when school starts up in the fall. And then we'll launch into all of those other training opportunities that I shared earlier in this meeting. I'm happy to take any questions you may have at this time.
All right, does the board have any questions?
What happens if they don't come to training?
This training, this first training is optional. So there are approximately 48 teachers. Of course, we'll pay them to come in because it's off, off their duty hours. And then on one of the, it's the second day on of the teacher work year when we have our rally and all of those things on that Tuesday when we come back to school. Our elementary teachers will be doing additional training and all of them will be there for the math curriculum that day. So we'll catch everybody and we're excited to do it.
All right, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, any comments from the board?
I took the fifth grade curriculum home. Still looking at it. Good though.
Glad to hear it. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Be anxious to see it implemented and see what changes it.
Take a motion for approval.
A move we approve, Curriculum Adoption, Elementary Math Grades K Through 5, iReady Classroom Mathematics, 2024 Curriculum Associates.
Second.
Brokaw?
Mayor?
Yes.
Stewart?
Aye.
Santos?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
All right, item number 28, approval, second reading, curriculum adoption, elementary science, grades K through 5, Discovery Education 2024. Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Trustee Candell. And this is our science curriculum that we're bringing before you for our hopeful approval this evening. We will be training on the science curriculum through our summer institute and future trainings over the course of the year. As the board may remember, throughout our listening tour process in the fall, we discussed the upcoming adoption process. And one of the things that's important to us is science. Our focus next year is math. Kids love science, however, and so we wanted to ensure that our teachers had a tool that's aligned to the standards, encapsulates a tool that they already know and really like called mystery science and is available to them for the science instruction that they do throughout the year. So we are confident that the. So we are confident that discovery education will be that tool.
Okay, thank you. Um, support have any questions? Any comment from the public? Seeing none, comment from the board? All right, I'll take a motion for approval.
Move approval, second, uh, move approval of curriculum adoption, elementary science grades K through five, discovery education, twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
Roll call.
Stewart?
Aye.
Santos?
Yes.
Palm?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Candell? Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
Okay, item thirty. First reading, revision of board policies and administrative regulations. Fossett.
Thank you, Trustee Candell. This is the first reading of these updated board policies and administrative regulations before you today. Um, from time to time, there's changes in laws and internal practices. These policies have been vetted by the various departments that oversee each of these areas and staff input has been, um, solicited on the ones that require it. I'm here for any questions you may have. This is the first reading only, no action is requested.
All right, any questions from the board? Uh, any public comment on this issue? Um, okay, any comments from the? No, this is the first reading only. Item thirty-one. Approval, adoption of Resolution A dash two-three, two-four dash three-one, a resolution of the governing board of the Luciemar Unified School District ordering an election and establishing specifications of the election order. Dr. Fossett.
Hey, this is a regular part of, um, our governance, um, business. Um, from time to time, elections come up. Um, this November fifth, twenty-twenty-four, regular election ballot will include three board positions. The school board positions scheduled for this upcoming election are trustee area one, um, trustee area two, and trustee area four, um, each of those for a full term from twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-eight. Um, the approximate cost will range between ninety-five thousand dollars and a hundred sixty thousand dollars, depending on the number of seats that are on the ballot, um, the distribution area, and the final printing of the mailing costs. The county clerk recorder's office will give us that final bill. Um, it's recommended that the board adopt this resolution, A twenty-three, twenty-four, thirty-one, of the governing board of the Luciemar Unified School District ordering an election and establishing specifications of the election order for the election of November five, twenty-twenty-four.
Any questions from the board? Uh, public comment? Seeing none, uh, comment from the board? All right, I'll take a motion for approval and adoption of this resolution.
Move approval of adoption of Resolution A twenty-three, twenty-four dash thirty-one, a resolution of the governing board of the Luciemar Unified School District ordering an election and establishing specifics of the election order.
Second.
Roll call vote. Santos?
Yes.
Stewart?
Aye.
Mayor?
Yes.
Candell?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. Um, item thirty-two. Approval, adoption of Resolution A dash two-three, two-four dash three-two, a resolution of the governing board of the Luciemar Unified School District requesting that the district's governing board member election to be held November fifth, twenty-twenty-four be consolidated with other elections, elections called for the same day in the same territory. Uh, Dr. Fossett.
This is an efficiency and cost-saving measure. Um, as a routine part of the election process, the Board of Education is asked to adopt the attached resolution to consolidate the governing board election with other elections held on the same date in the same territory on November fifth, twenty-twenty-four. Um, it is my recommendation this resolution is approved tonight.
All right, any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Um, I'll take a motion for approval and adoption of this resolution.
Move approval, adoption of Resolution A dash twenty-three, twenty-four dash thirty-two, a resolution of the governing board of the Luciemar Unified School District requesting that the district's governing board member election to be held November fifth, twenty-twenty-four be consolidated with other elections called for the same day in the same territory.
Second.
Uh, roll call. Stewart?
Aye.
Palm?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
Candell?
Yes.
Okay, item, um, thirty-three. Approval, adoption of Resolution A dash two-three, two-four dash thirty-three, candidate statement. Dr. Fossett.
Thank you, Trustee Candell. As a routine part of the election process, the Board of Education is asked to adopt the attached resolution, candidate statements, um, regarding statements of the candidates who run for office on November fifth, twenty-twenty-four, as members of the governing board of the district. It's recommended the board adopt Resolution A twenty-three, twenty-four, thirty-three, candidate's statement as presented.
Questions on this item from the board? Uh, comments from the public? Any comments from the board?
Two hundred words is not very much.
Not very much.
No.
What's that?
Two hundred words is not very much.
No.
Not for your service, no.
Um, I'll take a motion for approval and adoption of this resolution.
And move the adoption of Resolution A dash two-three, two-four dash thirty-three, candidate's statements.
Second.
Roll call vote, please. Mayor?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
Palm?
Yes.
Stewart?
Aye.
Candell?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. All right, we're moving along here. Um, thirty-four. Approval, adoption of Resolution A dash two-three, two-four dash two-six, a resolution of the governing board of the Luciemar Unified School District ordering an election and establishing specifications of the election order. Um... Mr. Eichberger.
Thank you, Trustee Candell. Uh, before the board this evening is a resolution tied to the board authorizing a general obligation bond be placed on the ballot, meaning, uh, state law requires that the board, uh, takes action to order, uh, the election. Ultimately, what would occur is there would be a seventy-five-word summary which would appear on the ballot and, uh, it would require a passage of fifty-five percent of the voter, the voters, and would require, if passed, an independent audit and citizens' bond oversight committee. Uh, this does require two-thirds of the school board to support calling the resolution, uh, meaning at least five board members must be present and vote yes, uh, to call an election. It's recommended that the board approve adoption, Resolution A twenty-three, twenty-four dash twenty-six.
Thank you. Uh, does any member of the board have a question?
I have a quick question. Mr. Eichberger, I just want to clarify, the, the board's not being asked to pass the bonds tonight, right? We're being asked to present the question to the voters for possible passage.
That is correct.
Yeah. Um, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, are there any comments from the board? Um, I just want to say, I'm, I'm grateful for the competent team that we have that's has administered our Measure I bond and... And I look forward to seeing this pass and being able to, um, finish the work, the good work that we're doing or make progress on the good work we're doing to make our schools and facilities better for our kids. Okay, uh... Take a motion for approval and adoption of this resolution.
Move approval, adoption of Resolution A dash twenty-three, twenty-four dash twenty-six, a resolution of the governing board of the Luciemar Unified School District ordering an election and establishing specifications of the election order.
Second.
Uh, roll call vote. Stewart?
Aye.
Mayor?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
Palm?
Yes.
Candell?
Yes.
All right, and, um, finally, item number thirty-five, action, student expulsion, student discipline cases, number two-three dash two-four dash zero-four-six and two-three dash two-four dash zero-four-seven.
Uh, I move, uh... That we accept the agreement and stipulation for immediate expulsion and suspicion, suspension of expulsions. The Board of Trustees finds there is cause to expel student case twenty-three dash twenty-four dash zero-four-six from all schools in the district for violation of Education Code Sections four-eight-nine-zero-zero-eight-two and four-eight-nine-zero-zero-eight-one and four-eight-nine-zero-zero-four. It is further moved that the board adopt the recitals, agreements, rehabilitation plan, and readmission review date as set forth in the May twentieth, twenty-twenty-four agreement and stipulation for immediate expulsion and suspension of expulsions.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mayor? Stewart?
Yes.
Mayor? Stewart?
Aye.
Santos?
Yes.
Candell?
Yes.
I move that we, uh, with the motion agreement and stipulation for immediate expulsion, the Board of Trustees finds there is cause to expel student case twenty-three dash twenty-four dash zero-four-seven from all schools in the district for violation of Education Code Sections four-eight-nine-zero-zero-eight-two and four-eight-nine-zero-zero-eight-one. It is further moved that the board adopt the recitals, agreements, rehabilitation plan, and readmission review date as set forth in the May twentieth, twenty-twenty-four agreement and stipulation for immediate expulsion.
Second.
Yeah, roll call. Yes. Santos?
Yes.
Stewart?
Aye.
Candell?
Yes.
Okay, uh, now it's time for public comment on items not on the agenda. For non-agenda items, this is a separate opportunity for comment. During regular meetings, speakers are limited to three minutes and must adhere to our decorum and order standards, which are detailed in our agenda. Um, any, I, I do have one, uh, speaker card for Keisha Nowehouse, is that right?
Evening, board members. Thank you so much for hearing me tonight. Um, on behalf of Tech Time Communications, and we, uh, specialize in security, fire alarm, intercom, and critical communications for school safety for students and faculty. Uh, we've been a trusted partner of Luciemar since nineteen... And, uh, recently, there were a couple bids that came up for some projects in the district, um, that were asking for a different fire alarm system, which is not nor, it's not out of the blue, it's totally normal. So we submitted a substitution request and we were denied. And so when I called the project manager, they informed me that the architect had not even given our substitution request to the district. Just want to make sure those lines of communication are staying open and that we have the opportunity to provide the district with fair and competitive bidding. Um, the person that did receive the bid, uh, is out of Fresno, so there are no local service technicians here in Luciemar School District to service, um, in case something does go wrong. Your guys' facility guys are great, they try to handle as much on their own as they possibly can, but when, you know, problems arise, you would like somebody that's a little bit closer to home. So just keeping that in mind, if you guys have any other questions, please feel free to reach out to Tech Time Communications. We are here for all, you know, all your needs, consulting, no matter what. All right? Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Um, are there any other, uh, public comments? Yes, there's one.
Go ahead and pass it down over here. Thank you, board members. Uh, I'm not a public... I'm sorry.
Your name?
Um, can I withhold that? Yes, you can remain in on this if you want to, yeah.
Okay.
Um, uh, I'm not a public speaker, super nervous getting up and talking, uh, but wanted to share, uh, a perspective of my family and our experience this, this last year. Um, our child entered Roygan High School as a freshman, uh, this year. In the weeks before school started, she came out to us with gender dysphoria. We didn't really understand what that meant or what to do. But we, we began a journey with her to understand and most importantly, to support her. As parents, we immediately feared for her safety at school. I'm sure you can all remember starting high school, um, in, in your life and the normal anxiety that you would have at that time. Uh, compound that with what, uh, she was dealing with at the time as well. Uh, I can sure, you can imagine what we felt as parents. We contacted, uh, Vice President Stewart, uh, as a friend to talk about what to expect. He made it clear that the school district was a safe space, but we all acknowledged that it was really difficult to control the hallways. Our daughter was determined to attend the Roygan High School, even knowing that other schools in the district might provide her a safer, a safer landing. Given that, we contacted the administrative staff to find out what we needed to do and thankfully found out that they had protocols in place and were ready to support our daughter as she prepared to socially transition at school. With our support, our daughter was able to work with the administrative to set up a plan that would be in place when she was ready. As hard, as hard as it was for us to let our daughter advocate for herself, we could see that the school was set up to manage all the sensitive issues that were to come in a professional and supportive manner. This year has had its ups and downs. Sorry. As to be expected, but the support from the administration and the teachers was tremendous. It made a big difference, even on the roughest days. On the whole, our daughter had a good year, finding community and support, uh, in student groups and in athletics. Whenever an issue did arise, the administrative team handled it and kept us informed. While we wish, uh, I can name each person positively impacted her year, I worry about anyone facing, uh, any unintended consequences for supporting her. Um, just to close, um... Sorry. Uh, I'm, I'm sharing a story with the board, uh, today, uh, so other families and students who may have, be in a similar situation know that our experience with the administration and the staff at AGHS exceeded our expectations. I also wanted to, uh, say that we've got an amazing daughter who has more courage and strength and character than anyone I know. So I just wanted to thank the board and the district for all the support.
Thank you so much for, for your courage in sharing that, thank you. Our next, uh... Regular meeting is scheduled for June eighteenth, same time, place. Uh, meeting is adjourned at eight-twenty-eight. Thank you.